Okay, if I'm gonna.
I can hear you great. I hope you can hear me.
Volume control there, Shimmy?
Yeah, it's all the way to the top. I don't know why.
When I'm at home, I have to call in and use my phone. I don't know why it's the same stupid computer, but I have to use the phone when I'm getting on a meeting at home, but not at work. Weird.
If you guys have thirty seconds, I'm gonna restart my phone. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna do that real quick. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it's still low, but I'm I'm gonna go for it. Um, sorry for the delay. Kevin, did you say Elena is not gonna join us?
Correct.
Okay, alright. Alright, uh, we're in the meeting for Metro District. It is September twentieth. Uh, let me just make sure that I got a quorum. Hi Larry, oh Barsati, hi. And Rolf, hi. Alright, uh, did you wanna do the roll call?
Chairman Shimmy Slomo.
Present.
Mike Barsati.
Present.
Ralph Jacobson. Larry Fox. Mike Graham.
He's not here. He told me he's gonna, uh, be out of town.
Okay, and I'd like to introduce Juan Alvarez, the new Mobility and Parking Director for the city of Manitou Springs. This is his first meeting with us today.
Hi Juan.
Everyone.
I met you on the street. Nice to meet you. Alright, uh, approval of the agenda, uh, as is, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Um, is there a second?
I'll second it.
On favor say aye.
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 Aye, that would be four to zero. Um, alright, reports, parking report, Kevin?
Overall revenue for August was forty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. That's an increase of twelve hundred thirteen year over year. Transactions were sixty-nine forty-five. That's an increase of sixty-five year over year. Uh, ironically, between the two lots, Wichita decreased, but Schmishney had increased, and that's why we were able to carry an increase into August. Uh, the transactions in Wichita were fifty-two thirty-nine. That's a decrease of seven hundred and four year over year. Schmishney was seventeen oh six. That's an increase of six hundred and thirty-nine. Revenue for Wichita was twenty-nine seven twenty-nine, a decrease of just under forty-one hundred. Schmishney revenue was eleven thousand thirty-four dollars, an increase of just over forty-one hundred. Permit sales were one eighty. That's an increase of ninety-five year over year. Wichita had a hundred dollars in permit sales. Schmishney had eighty. That was no change for Schmishney. Uh, there were fifty-one total citations issued. That is a decrease. Oh, I'm sorry, that is a typo. That is an increase of thirty-two year over year. And thirty-six were issued in Wichita, fifteen issued in Schmishney.
The huge increase in Wichita was all about.
Uh, one down at Schmishney, you mean?
Uh, I'm just, it's Schmishney, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Uh, we did have a couple events over the summer down in Soda Springs Park, and I know those events were kinda directing everybody to park in the Schmishney lot.
Um, I do have a question about the permits. I looked at it. Uh, before, and can you tell me how we have a hundred dollars over permit and eighty dollars at the Schmishney when we're charging two hundred and forty dollars per permit, Kevin?
Well, if it's a new permit holder, the board agreed at the time to allow the prorated fee to come in. If it's a existing permit holder, they are charged that two forty. So these are new permits that are being sold to new permit holders.
Got it. So on the new permit, you're prorating it still?
If they are a brand-new customer, not if they are renewing for the year. If they've had a permit in the past, they are not receiving that proration per your direction.
Got it. And how do we know if it was one from the past or if it's new? Is it by license plate?
We have it by license plate. We also have the, um, customer's information in the system. So if we search that customer and they pop up, we are able to see their history. If we search that customer, they're not there. They're a brand-new customer.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, anyone else? Questions for Kevin before I move on? Alright, thank you, Kevin. I appreciate it. Um, it's still you, actually. Mobility and Parking Board report.
Uh, so we have not met since July. No, we have not met since July. Our next meeting is scheduled for October twenty-fifth, and the focus that we're gonna start looking at is walkable city. That's gonna be the remainder of this year and next year's focus for the Mobility and Parking Board is the walkable city information.
And what is walkable city exactly? If you can give us a little bit more information about that.
Uh, well, I've really just started diving into it myself with the books that were purchased. Juan, would you be able to field that a little better?
Yeah, it, it's. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, it it's mostly, uh, mitigating, uh, traffic, you know, traffic, giving people other options for, uh, you know, improving, improving the city, um, as far as, you know, landscaping, uh, creating, but, uh, bu- bike lanes to, uh, allow more people to have other options of their, uh, driving vehicles into the city. Uh, a lot of it's beautifying the city, uh, making it appealing for people, for tourists or visitors that come in, uh, to make, create ways to, uh, have them come into the city a lot more than just driving into the city.
Are we looking at, uh, not having anyone park downtown and creating a shuttle of some sort? Is that what we're looking at? Something like, um, I believe Aspen? Is that what we're looking at?
So pretty similar. A lot of it has to do with infrastructure. I end, uh, and that's clearly what we're looking at, looking for different options, creating more options for people to, uh, come into the city other than driving into the city. So shuttles and bikes is, uh, are several options that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is that part of why we have about thirty or forty different shuttles at the Chase Bank last week or the week before? Is that part of the city's plan?
No, that was for the, the Pike's Peak, that was for the Pike's Peak Ascent Marathon to shuttle the runners down from the summit on Saturday.
Okay, but, uh, the city did buy some shuttles, if I'm not mistaken. When are those coming?
Six to eight weeks, we should have them.
And those are being used for how?
Uh, we're still determining routes, use cases for them. Uh, we don't even have the, the vehicles yet, so we're still in the planning phases of all that.
Okay. Any other questions for Kevin or Juan? Alright, thank you. Appreciate it. Finance report, Nicole? Nicole, are you with us? Maybe muted?
Yes, I was muted and I had my report in front of my mute button. Let me see if I can get this on share. So it's time for budget season. Uh, I just certified our, the residential lines or the, the lines for Metro and did the certification for the mill levy, so uh, those have been done. We, I also calculated the amount for the city costs for next year, and so I'm guessing that's what you will want to look at first.
Okay, and you did send it to us.
I did not send it to you. I'm sharing my screen now. Can you see the Excel spreadsheet?
I can't yet. Okay, here it is.
So after we found out how much more it was to get the lot painted, we took that amount out of the services that we were going to be doing and we'll just pay a straight-out fee for whatever that is contracted out. Um, you guys got a sweet deal on it this year. We will be paying out about twice as much as what we collected from you over the last three years.
Okay.
Um, this is how we have it set up. Street sweeping, one hour every two weeks during the season. Snow removal. You know, we never know exactly what it's going to be, but they calculate that out at six storms per year. Uh, part of the dinner, janitorial service. Um, what we believe that the city clerk will her time. Even if she's not at meetings, she'll have to listen to the meeting to take the minutes. So, um, finance supervisor, that would be me, accounts payable, um, parking enforcement. And then we put in miscellaneous this year because we have never, we've never captured this cost before for what the other people in the department do. Do we have any questions on this to start with?
Yeah, I do. Usually it's forty-eight thousand dollars. Am I looking at seventy-two thousand dollars at the moment?
Yes, you are.
Uh, this should be negotiated with the IGA, not just, uh.
This is, so if we wanna question something, this is where we question it on the hours. So there were things that were not included before, and they are being captured now. We did not have any hours that Becky does in the parking department. She, uh, for people that come in and complain about their tickets or taking payments, none of her time was previously on this amount that the city was capturing.
Again, I think this should be negotiated. It's not a done deal here. Uh, we have a contract with the city at forty-eight, close to forty-eight thousand dollars.
Not part of the contract. The contract says that we will provide certain services and they will be paid for at, at the salary rate.
And the agreeable amount is forty-eight thousand dollars, so is the
Amount was never on there.
I, I still am having trouble seeing how we have a fifty percent increase for a few things that Becky might have done or not done this past year.
Yes, and we've added, um, our parking director, some time for him.
Uh, I wasn't the one hired, Juan. The city did.
That is correct, and he will be
No offense, Juan.
I'm taken.
Thank you, sir.
So you're, you're saying that he's part of the parking department, but you don't see him doing anything for Metro?
I don't think so.
Different perspective.
What, what, Juan, what are you gonna do for us that nobody in your position did for us last year?
Yeah, that's what I'm working on right now with, uh, mostly with Kevin, so that can make, uh, a difference for your operation.
Also. We're gonna see an increase from last year.
We are gonna see
Percent increase.
No, we're going by a fo- we're assuming four percent.
Okay.
Forty-eight thousand, we're gonna pay seventy-two thousand. That's fifty percent in my book.
Um, that Becky amount is the lo- is most of it, seventeen thousand five ninety.
Okay. And that's because it was costing more, is that what you're saying?
Because we never put her in there before. We never charged you for the amount of time that she spends collecting for tickets and answering phone calls and whatnot. We just didn't have it on here.
I see, okay.
Kevin, what are we, what are we getting off of these parking tickets? How much do we actually collect?
The city collects, or I'm sorry, Metro collects one hundred percent of their parking funds.
And how much was this this last year?
I'd have to run a report for you, but I could do, definitely do that.
How much was it this last month? That's, that should be in the, in your figures here. As I recall, it wasn't very much.
Let's like get the parking. Don't we have that on there? Parking enforcement?
On here, I just heard the read with this thing sideways. One, two, three, four. The second and third ones down. We collected a thousand, three thousand, thirty-four hundred in one of our biggest months. Yeah, we're gonna pay her seventeen thousand to deal with something that doesn't even add up to seventeen thousand?
Becky also does the bookkeeping and reporting for the Metro District as well. Um, she's the one that puts these reports together for my, for me to build the reports for you guys. She assists with permit sales during the permit season and throughout the year. She assists with the citation resolution, whether it's taking a payment or looking at what's going on with that. She assists with any time we have to do any work in the lot. If I need to purchase equipment or materials for that, Becky does all of the shopping for the department. Becky does a lot to support the Metro operations.
And we've got, her calculated about ten hours per week.
And ten hours a week, Nicole, is adding up to how much?
Seventeen thousand five ninety.
A year. And that's the only difference? The seven, the eighteen thousand dollars is Becky?
We've got more than that.
No, and the parking director.
We didn't hire a parking director.
I know, I heard you say that before. Um.
The city did, and, and what the city is trying to do, in my opinion, is just basically saying, well, let's use Metro to, uh, pay some of his salary. And again, no, I, I don't want, want to feel bad about this, but I wasn't the one hiring him. We did not, as Metro District, hire anyone. And that shouldn't be on our expense. And we do have an IGA with the city, and that should be respected. Now, if the city wants to renegotiate that, they should let us know. But not saying as a fact that this is what's gonna happen from now on.
I'm sorry, Shimmy, the IGA does not state a dollar amount. Um.
So you guys found a little bit of a loophole and you're using it? Is that what you're saying, Nicole?
That's not what I'm saying at all. I was saying, this is our parking department. We have this new person, and they are part of that depart- parking department, but
Well, let me ask you a question. The parking department was able to run our, 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 uh, lots and everything else without Juan. Why are we getting charged for Juan now? Or anybody else? It was, it was, it was, go ahead.
So if I take that amount out, and we'll even take out the, I just put that in there basically to round it up, to be quite honest. This gets us down to sixty-eight four seventy-six.
I, I, I'm, this, this, Nicole, this is what I don't think is right.
Okay.
You, you're negotiating with me right now and telling me how much it's gonna be, which the city should negotiate with the Metro District. Wait, this, this should have been known, not notified. Now, i- it's like me telling you next week that, hey, you know what? I had a forty thousand dollar, uh, invoice for something that you guys are responsible for. How's that gonna go? This is what you guys are doing, is just saying, hey, there's a fact, there is new, somebody new in the parking department, somebody's gotta pay for his expenses.
I understand, and I thought that was a good argument, and I said, okay, let's take that out. Are we, are we still saying that Becky is not providing a service and should, and none of her time should be part of partly paid by Metro?
Uh, I didn't say that.
I'm, I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking the question, so this, this is how we
How many hours were on the finance department before?
The same number
I'm sorry?
The same number of hours. So let me pull up, I don't, let's see if we can get them both up at the same time, if you guys can see that.
Um, I'm, it's, and I apologize, it's hard for me to, I can barely hear you guys today. I don't know what's wrong with my phone. I can barely hear you. Putting the phone to my ear, so I can't look at the screen, but.
I only see the one screen right now.
Yes, that's all I see.
Right, yeah. When you do the screen sharing, I think you only see one screen. I'm trying to pull up the, I'm trying to pull up the one for last year. One moment, please.
Great, no problem. Take your time.
And let's see.
Nicole, did you get instructions to, uh, up the amount from, uh, forty-eight thousand dollars to, uh, seventy thousand by somebody?
No, Shimmy, what I did was I went into this sheet and I just did a new calculation for what, what we are paying out. So the previous one was forty-seven, seven oh eight. This is the amount. I did have to change the para rates because there is additional money put in there. Um, we added Becky and Juan. I took out this striping amount. And I'm going to just kinda open this up, and I'm gonna put the other numbers in so you can compare them.
And I appreciate you, thank you. I, I, I just don't see how we can go from forty-eight thousand dollars to seventy, a fifty, if, uh, you know, s- close to a fifty percent increase without
There's a reason I brought this up first. I knew this would be a discussion. Can you see, can you see this, or do I need to reshare again?
No, no, I, I got it.
It is a little small, Nicole. Can you zoom in on it?
Does that help? Do I need to zoom again?
Uh, we can zoom on our, on our end, Nicole.
Okay.
Which one are you looking at?
That looks good.
Well, it looks to me like all of the increases you have here are pretty modest increases, uh, cost of living type increases. I, I don't see any problem with, with what you've done there. I guess the shocker is is the Becky situation.
Correct.
Uh, how, how do you calculate that ten hours a week? I mean, I, I, I guess I have, having trouble uh, seeing how the city overlooked that. When it amounted to, you know, one-fourth of her time per week. I guess I would take issue with the amount of time.
So Kevin, do you think maybe she spends more time on more tickets through the other parking and maybe ten is a bit of an exaggeration? I mean, this, like I said, the uh, the agreement is that you will pay for what, what time the city spends doing these activities. So I guess the negotiation here would be, how much time do we think Becky spends in the office dealing with Metro? That Metro percentage?
With Becky's, with Becky's role in the department, that would be seasonally based. Um, obviously, permit season, we're gonna deal more with, with the permitting for Metro. Everybody's coming in, getting their permits January, February. Versus, you know, a, a handful of new residents or new employees throughout the year. Just as the RPPs and the city lots as well, that's our busy time. If we were to take the average over the year, I would say it's about ten hours a week, but the chunk of that comes during that permit season. So if we wanted to bring that down a little bit, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Um, like Nicole said, that was our, our best educated guess on knowing what Becky does, talking with Becky, and reviewing Becky's records about the average that Metro District issues are handled by her.
Well, I, I, Kevin, I, I, I just find it hard to believe. This is a full-time, forty-hour-a-week employee. And she spends twenty-five percent of her time all year dealing with Metro? I, I find that incredible.
With
I do too.
With what Becky does, with the transaction reporting, revenue reporting and bookkeeping, that's that's her main focus, and she jumps in and helps the office staff as she can. So she does, the majority of her day is whether it's city, bookkeeping, revenue, transactions, or Metro, that's what she's doing the majority of her day.
Metro is a minuscule part of the entire city.
It is, and it's integrated in with the city system, so there's a lot of her diving into the reports that Becky has to do to pull out the Metro stuff. Uh, when we run reports, kind of high level here, when we run a report for the mobile pay option, it comes as one report. She then has to break that report down to figure out what was done for Metro, so Metro is being paid appropriately.
So Kevin, let's look at this at a different way. How many total parking spaces do we have?
Total parking space is just under a thousand.
And how many, how much does Metro have? And how many, how much does Metro have?
Has about two hundred.
You're right, about two hundred. You're right, Larry.
Okay.
We're at about one thirty or one forty, not two hundred.
Well, with both, both lots.
Eighty-four and forty-one, if I'm not mistaken.
Sorry, I stand corrected.
Yeah, you are.
I'm, I'm sorry. Have about a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, one, 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 one twenty, one thirty would be more likely.
Third, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Thank you for the correction, Shimmy.
No worries.
One twenty-five, to be exact.
So let's say that it's only, uh, let's base it, uh, base it on math and uh, if we base it on math, it would make it closer to her having four hours a week and not ten, which is going to change this. Let's. And then I will put some notes on as to how we determine that.
And we said, how many total spots we have, Kevin, again? I'm sorry?
One twenty-five.
Uh, in, in the entire city.
One twenty-five.
For Metro, one twenty-five is Metro. We have just under a thousand for the city.
Yeah, so we have.
About ten percent.
Ten percent, not, well, I'm sorry, I based it off of the two hundred amount before, so that's, it'll be ten percent instead of, instead of almost three. Okay.
I'll, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with negotiating. I just don't like when it comes in a surprise, Nicole. And, and, and that's what I do not appreciate. If, if there was.
Me, I did not mean, I did not mean to be a surprise. We are just going over the budget for next year. I am, I'm sorry.
It's not you, it's not you that I'm saying is the problem. The problem is the city of Manitou Springs. Okay? When, when, when something needs to be renegotiated, it needs to come up as a subject, and everybody needs to sit down and decide what's going on and not blindside. I, I do not appreciate when it goes from forty-eight thousand dollar agreement to seventy. It's just not the right way to negotiate something. And what you guys are creating is stress, and when there is stress, I'll look for different solutions. And if I find a different solution that would look better, then we go different parts, we go different ways. And, and, and it's just, you, you guys are creating a problem, and I'm not sure why.
Okay, I was not trying to create a problem. I was trying to capture costs that we thought we were missing before. And having this discussion let us know that we were going off of some wrong assumptions, so we're going to, to change that, okay?
And, and that's, again, that's not a problem, but if there is a problem with calculations, the subject needs to come up. And, and somebody needs to say, hey, you know what, this, this is, uh, 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 we have a problem here. It's not enough money. We don't charge enough. This is what I think, you know, needs to happen. The subject is gonna come up on the agenda. A, a, and, and not just, uh, uh, showing a seventy thousand dollar basically invoice when it's regularly forty-eight thousand dollars. I, I don't know how you guys think it's gonna fly like that. It, it, it's just bad business, in my opinion.
I thought there were going to be some discussion about this. So, um, I recognize that you're, you feel that this could have been presented in a different way, and I'm sorry.
It could have been presented in better ways from the mayor already, not from you, Nicole, from the mayor.
I didn't let the mayor.
Or from city.
I am presenting this information to you before anyone else.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm presenting this information to you before anyone else. The mayor doesn't know anything about this.
I know, you're just a messenger and it shouldn't be like this. It shouldn't be like this.
But we're not making this decision anyway. This is just the first discussion, so.
No, what you don't understand, Ralph, is they didn't give you any, 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 uh, 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 um, they didn't give you any, um, uh, choice here. They basically shoved it up your face and told you that from now it's gonna be seventy thousand dollars. Not forty-eight.
I, I don't feel like I presented it that way.
You didn't. The city of Manitou Springs did.
I'm, Jimmy, I'm the one bringing the information up. I'm the one that created this worksheet. I am the one that's trying to create your budget for next year.
Okay, all right. Maybe I see it wrong and I apologize.
Yeah, it's all on me. I'm the one that did all this.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so, so Nicole, you are, you're suggesting that you revise that to four hours a week and then it would be adjusted in real time?
I think that we need to make it even less than that because, let's see. Thousand. Um, with those in parking lots. I think it's gonna be closer to, uh, the two. Let's get this back up. Let's see if I've got the, this is not the right one now. That gets us to fifty-four thousand, four oh four. Does this look like it's reasonable?
Yeah.
Fifty-four is more reasonable than forty, than seventy, yes, for sure.
It's an increase. We're gonna have to increase, um, recapture those costs that aren't added in there. It's not a huge amount of money. So.
And, uh, like you said, you did not, did not ask for a director, parking director, so we will leave that out. You know that we, we do other things, but uh, we were going, we can leave this at that. So when we look at the rest of this budget, I'm going to pull up the rest of the budget now, okay?
All right.
We save this.
Go ahead.
So.
Uh, can we, can we add this to the agenda next month again, Nicole?
So, um, of course we can. We can go back over the budget with any of the changes that you instruct me to put in there, so.
Thank you.
Um.
Let me, I, I can't see the bottom of this, so it, what, what you're saying is it, you, you lowered that to forty, to sixty-four thousand, is that correct?
Fifty-four?
Fifty-four, I think it was fifty-four, four oh four.
Fifty-four thousand, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I, my hearing aids don't sometimes hear what is exactly said.
Sometimes we don't say the things we mean to say.
My, my hearing aids make up things sometimes.
I'm sure they help more than hinder. Okay, so we have a new budget that we need to put in. I put some preliminary numbers in here, but, um, it's your budget. We will change this city amount. How much did I just say? Fifty-seven, four oh four?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, four oh four.
Thanks, I'm sorry. And I kind of left everything about the same. I, of course, did some increases for, um, for the salaries. And I lowered this because I thought it was, it wasn't accurate. It was increased too much for last year. I left fifty thousand in the professional services. We don't have to use it, but at least it's available then to be used. Um, uh, I did attend the, uh, special districts and their insurance will be going up ten percent. I did the mill levy calculation. It's going to be a slight increase. Of course, we never rely on those money, monies at all. And so I did increase uniforms to four hundred, assuming we're going to have, we have, we're gonna have a lot of new people next summer that need vests. Um, once again, just because I put it in there doesn't mean we need to use it. So there was some discussion about, uh, maybe having more money online in case, case you have some capital that you wish to purchase. We can always, you guys can always make that decision and do a mid-year budget change if you need to do that. So do we have any areas that you think we need to change?
Can I enter that, Nicole? Uh, this is for the board's information. The kiosks in the lots are aging. I did present a cost to replace those. Maybe that would be something to consider for capital if we wanted to look at replacing the infrastructure.
Kevin, can you give me information on how it's working at the seven oh two Manitou Ave location, please, with no, with no, uh, meters over there?
That is an SP plus operation. I have no idea. That's a private lot that the city has nothing to do with.
Okay, city's not involved in that. Fair enough. Uh, what's the cost for, uh, new machines, by the way?
Uh, let me pull that quote. I'll be right back with you.
Right now, we have twenty thousand in there for kiosk internet connection fee and whatnot. Um, current actual is only one thousand eight hundred. I kind of base that off of our catch-up from twenty twenty-two. I don't know how much the kiosks run.
The internet connection is twenty thousand dollars for three machines that we have?
No, it's just being budgeted possibly for replacement.
Right. One thousand, one thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars is what's been spent to T2 thus far.
I see that, thank you.
But, thank you. Just saying that we might replace, so we're budgeting twenty thousand for that possibility, which we don't have to spend, even if we put it in the budget, you know?
And here, I can get rid of these, maybe it'll make it easier to see.
Uh, the most recent quote that I have is twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred for three new machines.
Twenty-nine thousand?
Yeah, for three machines, two in the Wichita lot and one in its machine.
Let's put thirty-five thousand in there then. Any other items you would like to have in the budget?
I think it looks okay. Anybody else?
Nope.
Do, do we, are we to have an election this year?
I think you're supposed to have an election last year.
Yes, we did have an election last year.
Uh, the elections are only on odd years, if I'm not mistaken.
And when I said last year, I meant this year. Sorry.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the next one is twenty twenty-five, Larry, I believe, but we need Elena for that.
And then, uh, Shimmy, do you want me to bring up the manager's letter for everyone to look at?
Uh, manager's letter?
Your letter for the budget?
Um, sure.
It's basically the same every year, but if you guys, uh, it's usually a group thing, um, or I just do it and say, hey, does this look good? Basic, basically that's what I'm doing. So.
And I appreciate you doing that, thank you.
Okay, so please take a look at this and let me know if we need to make any changes. Mill levy has stayed the same. Um, basically, it says that you're doing the same thing this year that you've done in the past few years.
Are you trying to pull it up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you could see it. You're right.
We, we can't, I'm, I'm good with it.
I can't see it either.
Sorry. How about now?
Yes, now we can. I see it. Okay, that's just the regular letter.
I don't know if we want to take out number five for the efforts on ADA. And that was pretty much what we did with the bathroom last year, unless you guys are actually going to make strides.
Um, no plans to do anything, so maybe take five out.
Yeah, I would take that out.
Okay.
I agree.
I will say, I was disappointed, uh, in the remodel of the bathroom. That, uh, all there is is, in that large of a building for the men's, there's only a, uh, one stool. There's no urinal. And I found that. I can't think of another public bathroom I've seen that was designed that way. I, I think our upgrade was a downgrade.
And I believe that's because of the ADA, um, there is a limit, space limit over there, and I believe you can only fit one.
Yeah, it just seemed, uh, that the ADA is supposed to increase possibilities, not decrease them. But in this case, it decreased facilities.
Okay, so that's what I have as far as, unless you guys want to look at the uh, certification on the mill levy or the Metro budget. That's all I have for the finance reports. And then I will, I will create the actual budget then for the next meeting, and if there are any last minute changes, we can do that at the time.
Great.
All right, all right. Well, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. We all appreciate your work. Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? Thank you, Nicole. Um, all business, all business continued, um, we gotta look back at this seal coat and striping operation for both this Schmishney and Wichita lot. And, um, I think it brought up, it was, uh, brought up last time, and we just gotta pretty much say to go. Um, I think the two options, um, one was, um, about eleven thousand dollars. The other one was more complex at a hundred and fifty. I think the, uh, eleven thousand uh, dollar option would be, uh, much better at the moment. Um, I believe though, and, and, and I did say that I thought the city should pay for it, but I looked at the IGA and it does say just the striping is under the city, so, um, we will just pay our part. Um, and we can, on my part, we can go forward and approve that, um. I believe the quote that we have was for the Wichita lot only. Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong?
No, that is correct. Um, I went back and reviewed the July meeting when this came up, and I asked if you wanted me to look at the Schmishney lot as well. Uh, you stated that you would check the lot and get back with me. I never received a direction on Schmishney. But they are mobilizing October sixteenth to do the Wichita lot. I can get them to do the Schmishney lot in the same timeframe. If you would like, that will adjust the pricing a little bit, but it won't be too bad. I paid, I believe it was just under seventy-five hundred for the Prospect lot, and that's about the same size as the Schmishney lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. If we're doing, uh, one, we should do the other, um, at the same time. And then we can, uh, stripe that as well after that.
And that will be good for five years at least. It protects underneath too, this, the seal coating, I think will. Yeah, so what they're gonna do is, is they'll, they'll fill all cracks over a quarter of an inch. Yeah, so what they're gonna do is, is they'll, they'll fill all cracks over a quarter of an inch or bigger. They will fill those with um. The rubberized crack filling and then they'll seal coat new black top over the top, make the lot. Real nice and black and then they'll go in redo all the ADA. Um, meltdowns and all the striping in the lot. And they'll do that in both lots.
They do the striping also, the company.
Yep. So the first day.
Direction though, or to make sure.
Yes, um, so, correct. So that first day they will come out and they will crack us, fill the cracks, seal coat the lot. That will set overnight. The following day they'll be out and stripe. They stripe the prospect lot in about an hour and a half. So I mean, that lot was open and ready to go in three hours on the second day.
Ralph, one of the issue, one of the problems we have uh in my estimation at the Wichita lot is. All that spider web cracking. Seems to indicate that the subsurface may be a little unstable. And so while this will solve the problem for a number of years. We may have to do something more drastic later on. But I, I would agree with Shimmy. This is the right thing to do for now.
Yep.
Okay, did we want to make a? Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, and uh seal coat. Uh, the both lots.
Is there a second?
I second. Michael does.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yo, aye.
Aye, that would be four to zero. All right, thank you, guys.
So happens in October. Good.
That will happen in October. Do you remember the exact date, Kevin? I'm sorry.
October sixteen and seventeen.
And are you gonna put the um blinking sign up at Schmishki saying, hey, you can't park here for a day or something? Give them a week, couple of days notice or?
Yeah, we will go out, we'll hit the, all the vehicles with flyers. We'll make accommodation for the permit holders. Um, that way they're not feeling that they're just SOL with the parking space for two days. We will allow them into the RPPs. Um, we will have to remove the delineators and the sensors for this project. So we will not have any count data for those two days while those, that equipment is out. But we'll get that put back in as soon as we're given the green light from the company that we can. Uh, work on the surface. And we'll make sure that all the permit holders for the Metro District are taken care of.
Wonderful. Thanks. That's a lot of extra work. Man, is that a can of worms. Good luck. You probably need it.
Thanks, Kevin, for putting all this together for us. Thank you.
Yep, not a problem.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, we can probably move on to number two, determination regarding miss pay of uh for the employees. Um, I've spoke to Nicole on this multiple time.
He's not moving.
Shimmy, did you die?
He was not moving. I saw that.
She was kind, they all started.
Shimmy, could you start over? Could you start over, Shimmy? Start over. We didn't hear you for a second. Just start over with that issue.
Yes, I can, I can do that. I can do that. Um, we can go forward to determination regarding the miss pay for employees. Um, I spoke to Nicole multiple times. Um, back and forth on emails as well. She was kind. She calculated the hours for three employees. We went back. We looked at. You know, who got hired at the same time and it was three employees. The one is Sally. Um, Brian is the second and then Beverly was the third. They were all. Hired around the same time. They were all hired at thirteen dollars an hour. Um, they were uh promised fifteen dollars an hour by Tracy, which was running um, uh, everything at that time. Um, the miscommunication was uh with me and Tracy, I believe. Uh, either I told the town to start him at thirteen and she, she, she thought that they were getting fifteen. Either way, it's a human error. I'm not looking to blame anybody. I'll take full responsibility for this mistake. Um, but uh, in, in my opinion, we need to fix it. Um, we can do that. Um, the difference altogether, and Nicole can correct me if I'm wrong, with all the hours. Um, would be about twenty-seven hundred dollars. Um. And that's, that's a, that's a, about a year's worth of paychecks for those three specific employees. Um. That's, that's my recap on that. I think we should go forward and pay the difference. It's. Two dollars times as many hours as they worked. I've sent you guys uh emails. Showing how many hours that is per employee. I don't know if you guys looked at it or not, but. After Nicole calculated it, um, I forward the email to you guys so you can see it. Uh, again, the total by my calculation is about twenty-seven hundred dollars. And I think we should uh, uh, go ahead and, and pay the difference. Um, up to you guys. Discussion?
I agree with that assessment. I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Bersadi. Ralph?
Yes, I agree. We should definitely pay that amount.
I don't, I don't think we should hesitate.
Okay, uh, let's make a vote. Uh, can you uh? Go have and, go ahead and uh present it, Larry?
Uh, yeah, I make a motion.
Make a motion?
I make a motion that we uh, uh, pay. Uh, former employees or the current or former employees, uh, back pay, uh, as outlined by Shimmy.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So Shimmy, will you just send me an email confirming that so I can have that document to give to payroll?
Absolutely. I will respond to that email today when the meeting is done.
Thank you, and we will get that paid out on the next payroll.
Thank you. That was uh four to zero. Um. I believe Elena said we don't need to approve all the reports, but just in case, um. Um, do we want to make a motion to approve the parking, mobility and finance report? Can you remember if she said no, Nicole? She did say no, we don't need to?
I don't remember that.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion and um, and to approve the parking report, mobility and parking board report and the finance report. Um, is there a second?
I'll second.
That was Bersadi. All in favor, say aye.
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 There will be four to zero. Um, okay, guys, new business. Uh, there is an event parking request by the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, presented by uh Jenna Galas. She's with us. Um, it's the coffin races. Um, and Jenna, if you're here, go ahead.
Hello, everybody, and uh, thanks for taking a minute. Um, I'll be the easiest part of your meeting, I hope. Um, I'm just here to request a couple of spaces in the Wichita lot. Um, we have utilized that parking before and it's been really helpful during the coffin races, uh, which this year is October the twenty-eighth. Um, just looking to park some vendors and volunteers again in Wichita as it's kind of right central to. Um, what, what activities we're hosting down, um, kind of in the central lane of the seven hundred block. Uh, I was uh previously speaking, um, and in the past we've utilized the entire lot. Um, those needs have kind of changed. Um, so I would like to request about half of the lot, which I believe, um. It's about forty spaces, probably forty, forty-two if I'm exact. Um, and uh, would like to consider the Metro Board to offer the same rate. Um, that we pay to uh acquire the city spaces per day, which is eight dollar fee. Um, we won't be utilizing the spaces the entire direct day. The duration would really be. Um, from about eight in the morning till about three in the afternoon at most.
Jenna, how did you calculate eight dollars um for the space?
I'll let Kevin speak to that as he's got his hand up.
Uh, last year, event coordinator Megan Weiss came up with a uh, event policy use guide. And in that use guide, she had determined. A rate for parking spaces to be rented to events and all day rate is eight dollars. Anything up to half a day is four dollars. Um, that was adopted by city council in. August or September of last year, I believe. Um, and we've been going off of that. So if they're utilizing the lot from eight to three, we're looking at about eight hours. It'd be a dollar an hour. Uh, that's what the city's charging for any on-street or city-owned parking spaces to the events.
So regular parking on Manitowoc is four dollars an hour, eight for the second hour. And a special event is a dollar an hour, Kevin.
I did not write the use event. I just follow what was approved.
Okay. All right. Uh, any thoughts?
Well, I think uh we definitely should help uh the chamber out. Uh, it's a very important event. Very, very important event and we want to uh help them. Um, we would be basically. I think that we should um. Do this, uh, eight dollars a day. Uh, they won't be there all day, so we might even be able to turn it around again. Um. So. I'm in favor of this.
I agree with Ralph. Ralph?
So we're looking at forty-two spaces because that's what she's asking for. Which we're not going to be able to determine if she's using forty-two or eighty-four. Uh, that day uh to begin with.
Let me, I love to just pause that for one moment because uh, as Kevin knows, I do create event parking passes. And I will number those passes and um, I can even issue you all a spreadsheet of. Which person with a contact number is in a certain space with a certain number pass. So. I would be more than happy to do something separate for the Wichita lot in that manner to make sure that we're only utilizing the forty-two spaces and that they can all be accounted for.
Okay, that's nice. Thank you.
I'll, I'll piggyback on that, that I worked the event all day. I can make several passes through the lot to ensure it is only forty-two spaces with permits.
Okay. Um. Thank you both for that. So, so by my calculation, just, just so it's very clear. We're looking at forty-two spaces, eight dollars a space. And we're looking at, uh, let me just do that, three twenty, three thirty, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Is that what you're offering from the chamber, Jenna? Just, just to be clear?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Larry?
Yeah, I don't real, I don't have any problem with this. I think that we should. Help, you know, our mission is to uh help the businesses. This whole part, whole thing does help certain types of businesses uh. For, for the day and parking is incredibly complicated anyway. Bringing the town more people that can park anyway. Half the parking lot isn't really gonna have any kind of impact one way or another. So, yeah, let's do it.
Okay, all right.
Is that a motion?
I can move that we accept the um, that we allow, we, we rent forty-two spaces to the chamber. Uh, for the coffin races at eight dollars a spot. Um, and that will be coordinated through Kevin.
Before there is a second. Um. Jenna, are you guys gonna have people working the lot that day?
Uh, we can certainly provide volunteers um to man the lot and the spaces, which would probably be very important. Um, I know in the past, um, we've had the metro folks there to kind of make sure that those that are, that are coming into that lot should be there. Um. So i- if you would like for us to provide volunteers, I would be happy to station folks there and make sure that the right credentials uh for each vehicle entering the lot are present.
Okay, thank you. I would, I would like the chamber to be responsible about that. Um. Just because we're short on employees, I don't want to make the commitment for that. Um, so it would be, it would be nice if you can.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, there will be four to zero.
Thank you all very much. Um, I hope this really was the easiest part of your meeting today.
Sure was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, number two is reimbursement uh to uh Larry Fox for his Metro District meeting. Um, up in the mountains, um, not, not necessarily meeting, but uh, Larry, can you give us a little bit of uh, uh, info on that?
The special districts, I attended the. Special districts convention. Uh. To uh, get information on issues that uh. Do confront us throughout the year. And I will say I got all the answers to all the questions and the contacts that I need, that I was looking for. In uh, basically a little over one day. Uh, Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday through half the day. A little over half the day. Uh, and so consequently, I was only, only needed to stay one night. Uh, the uh, registration was three hundred and fifty dollars and my hotel was. Uh. I, I don't have it in front of me yet. I, somewhere right around two hundred and forty dollars or so.
Okay, I appreciate you going. Um, hopefully next year.
There, it's okay.
Yeah, this time of the year, it's no, uh, it's no problem. Uh, uh, in the winter time will be a different story.
All right. This was in Keystone, by the way.
All right, um, I'll make a motion. We reimburse Larry for his, um. Uh, fee and the one night up in Keystone. Um, is there a second?
Yeah, second. Let's do it.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, that would be uh three to zero. I don't think Larry can vote on that one.
Oh.
No, keep an eye on, uh, we should go to all, we should definitely go to those and also not only just uh the special districts, but any kind of parking. Seminars too. You never know when that knowledge comes in, so I'm, thanks for going and keep looking for other ones to go to, too.
Absolutely, I agree. And if there is others and uh somebody else wants to go, uh, please let me know.
There were uh one sidelight to this, one, one uh. Perp, I, I, for lack of a better word, for uh registering was that I have. For the next year, I can have access to all. Uh, seminars and meetings that were held. Uh, it was basically a three-day event. And so if anybody would, you can look on the special district's website. And they have a listing of all of the uh. For lack of a better word, the seminars that they had. And if anybody's interested, I'd be happy to provide uh, a link to, for you to watch those.
Thank you.
And it's, it's good for, for the follow, for the next year.
Thank you, Larry. All right, moving on. Number three, discussion regarding the potential reimbursement for uh tree trimming operations. Um, I probably need to uh ask Nicole about this. Uh, Nicole, looking at the IGA, um. I was looking for the striping and stuff and I saw that we're not covered for that, but I did see that we are covered for tree trimming operations. Which we needed to do some, I believe it was in March. And we paid for it. Um.
We have, the tree trimming is not in that list of things that we have hourly wages. So nothing has been paid to the city for that. So if somebody in the city, and I don't know Shimmy, that we have. So if somebody in the city, and I don't know, Jimmy, that we have anyone available right now. Our arborist is, I asked him to do some things over here by our parking lot and he said he was too busy to do that. So I don't think that they have the time to do that right now and that would be an additional fee. It's not included in what we just went over as far. In the IGA, it says we can provide those services, but we don't have that built in for our services that you've paid for.
In the agreement, it says those are non-exclusive lists of services. Actually, which is weird that they would put that in there. So it says tree trimming, but.
I believe it's on Exhibit A. Can you look at it for me, Nicole?
So, like I said, that is in there that we can provide or the city can provide that, but it's not that they will or they have to.
Okay.
Let me. Read it right.
And give me a moment. I will see if I can get that pulled up.
And do we want to wait for them is the question, I think, Jimmy. Even if they are gonna.
No, we did already. I'm just looking to get reimbursed.
To get the money back? They already did it?
Uh, we did it. We did it.
And how much was that? Remember?
It was like nine hundred dollars.
The one before was about three thousand dollars, Nicole. It was in March.
Let's get the city to do that from now on, yeah.
Let's see real quick. The city, through its Public Services Department or other mutually agreed upon independent contracts, shall perform maintenance services. Reasonably necessary to maintain the parking lots, including, without limitation, those identified in Exhibit A.
Exhibit A?
And in Exhibit A. I see lot striping, lot maintenance. Trash monitoring, trash service, street sweeping, snow removal, tree trimming.
So, but does it say that there's a monetary amount for that? So we don't, we don't pay for all of our services like the, on the parking lot. We have to go out and contract for that.
Under tree trimming, Nicole, it does state personnel expense, equipment slash contract service.
Correct.
So what we're saying, what I'm saying is we don't have any tree trimming already built in for what you paid for, for city services. We just looked at that. On the cost allocations.
I understand it's not there, but it's the city's obligation to do that. Now, if you guys didn't calculate it. Not so much my problem or the Metro District's problem.
Okay, we're gonna have to discuss that. This is gonna have to be with a higher level person than me. Because this is going into those things where that. I don't feel like I have a say-so on that.
And we're asking to be reimbursed? Is that what you're, we're trying to do? To get reimbursed for the three thousand?
I didn't hear your question, Ralph.
Are we trying to get reimbursed for the three thousand that we just paid? Or is this going forward?
Yes, that's, that's my attempt of getting reimbursed for something that we already spent money on because. When I looked at the IGA, I thought that we're covered for. The, the, the sealant as well for the. Lots, but we weren't. It was only lots striping, like just how it says right here at Exhibit A. And then I found out that at Exhibit A, it says that the city is liable for tree trimming. And they didn't say anything before that. We paid already in March. A substantial amount of money to, to a service company to come and do that. Now, if it's already covered by the city. Then we should be reimbursed for that. So that, that's, that's my point and, and I, I do agree with Nicole. If that's not calculated, I understand they're not calculating it in our budget. But it's not because we, we don't have it covered. We have it covered. They just don't calculate it. So again, this is another issue that needs to be.
My interpretation of that, Jimmy, was that if we went out and got, and got somebody to pay for the, and paid a contractor. To do those services, you would still have to be paid for from Metro budget money. That's my interpretation.
Your interpretation is that mine is it should be part of the forty-eight thousand dollars that we're paying the city to begin with under this. Agreement. If, if not, why there is an agreement if we don't have a specific amount? You, you guys can give me, you can give us an invoice every Monday and Thursday. And make it a seventy thousand, just like the city is trying to do right now.
That is not at all what's happening, but if you want to negotiate this and talk to somebody else.
It's not me that needs to negotiate this. It's the city, Nicole. You, 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 you guys are basically saying. You know, you, you, you're trying to make up your own rules. It doesn't work that way. It just doesn't. If, if you guys, if you guys are not happy with forty-eight thousand dollars, you should come up and say, hey, we're not happy. This is not covering. All the expenses and we would like to sit down. And, and, and calculate with you what's good for me and you together. What's, what's good for Metro District? And the city of Manitou Springs. If we're not doing that, then what kind of partnership is this?
You know, we just didn't, I don't think, and I certainly would never have imagined that tree trimming was part of our agreement. It's, it definitely in there. Written in there. So I think you definitely have a point, Jimmy, and I think you probably. Represent Metro to Rebecca and or Denise. And. Tell them our, our views on that, I think.
I, I, I just wanted to bring it up to everyone's attention.
Yep, I, I, I appreciate you looking in the details like that and you, you are. Might be right and I think you should probably negotiate that with them and.
Okay, we can, you know, it, it's, it's, it's out there. We can go back to it and like Nicole said, you know, it's, it's not her, for her to decide. She needs to bring it up to someone. Higher.
And like I said, we did not include that it, tree trimming for what it would cause us to do it. We didn't include that in that annual amount.
Shani and Roy did mention this week that he was looking to tree trimming operations, so. All right, I'll put that. His providers, he can take a look at it, get back to you.
Okay, thank you, Juan. And Nicole, you know, just to be clear, I, I'm not complaining. You know, about your calculations. I know what you're trying to do, but at the same time. You know, when something changes, when a, when a budget change, when agreement changes. It needs to be upfront. And, and, and not put up as a, as a. You know, pretty much of a. Determination by the city, you know, this is. We have an agreement with the city and it's, it, it needs to be. Talked with either, you know, Roy, Denise, the mayor. And if they're not happy with the forty-eight thousand, that, that, that forty-eight thousand dollars is the key point here. And if the city is not happy with that amount, they should say that. And, and, and you know, and present something else, just like you presented now today, a seventy thousand dollar. You know, it, it should have been presented by Roy or Denise, you know, as a, as a new contract with the city.
Okay, the, that part I have to disagree with because this is what I've done every year for the last several years. Is presented that spreadsheet with those items and there have been changes over the years. So to say that all of a sudden I'm unhappy that the, the way it's been presented. Doesn't seem quite fair to me when I am the one that created that spreadsheet and presented it for budget consideration. So as far as the trees, yes.
Problem is not with the presentation, Nicole. The problem is because it went from forty-eight thousand dollars to seventy thousand dollars overnight. And that's, and, and, and that's something that needs to be.
And that was, and, and I thought that we were able to come to an agreement with that, so.
Okay, okay. Well, I appreciate you presenting it and there's no bad feelings here. And we are sure gonna look it over again. And as I see it, we went from seventy to fifty-four at the moment. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. And we will put it on the agenda again next month and if it's okay with you, we can approve it then. We, we still have time, Nicole. Just to make sure.
Correct. I, I will get the full budget that shows the fund balance and everything for. And have the resolutions ready for everyone for the next month so that we can meet the October fifteenth deadline.
October fifteen is the deadline?
It's the deadline when I'm supposed to have this information, draft budget presented.
And let's just make sure that we're meeting in October before the.
Eleven, October eleven.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, all right.
That's correct. That was one of those dates that, that I learned at the Special Districts Convention.
We do this every year.
Yes, we do it every year. Nicole, you're very, you've been very, very good at keeping us on track. Thank you.
All right. Let me just make sure there was nothing else on. Go back to the agenda.
Yes, discussion and public comment is left. No one is on, but I would like to make a public comment myself. Go ahead. So Juan, welcome to Manitou. We're very excited to have you onboard. You will be working with us. I would like to meet you. Do you have an office at, at the pool or where do you work out of?
I'm working out of Public Works right now.
Okay, great. So that's where you're gonna be pretty much stationed is up there.
For now, I know we're looking for a different location a little bit later on, but I think for the next six months, I'll be, I'll be at this location.
Roy is still up there too, right?
He is.
Okay, Kevin's the only one in the pool, so great. Well, I'm gonna definitely make an appointment to meet with you. I hope every one of us does. Personally, we go in and, and meet with you personally privately and. Welcoming you to Manitou, so we, we want to work with you and make this a success, so. Thank you and I am happy to have you onboard. Take care.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ralph. Just to make sure, any other discussion or public comment?
I just want to ask Larry to send me his information for the reimbursement, okay?
Yes, yeah, no, I'll, I'll do that. I intended to do that before this meeting, but. You know, it's either my busyness or forgetfulness, okay?
That's your reminder.
All right, any, anybody else?
I just want to add that we do not have any public in the audience, so there's no public comment.
All right, then if everyone is. Good to go, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Take care of this.
All right, bye everyone.